Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order and I need a motion please to go into closed session.
I move we go into closed session for the purpose of collective bargaining negotiations discussion.
Support.
Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote please?
Yes, Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Hire?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes.
We are now in closed session. Trustees, if you will leave this link and then please go to the other link that Mr. Hire sent. I will join you there in just a moment. Thank you. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call please?
Yes. Mr. Need?
Here.
Mrs. Egan?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Here.
Mrs. Crane?
Here.
Ms. Catalina?
Here.
Mr. Hire?
Here.
Mrs. Horst?
Here. This meeting is a meeting in public of the Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community hearing. There is time for public participation as indicated in the agenda in items three and nine. Item two is approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Or?
Any questions on the agenda tonight? Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote please?
Mr. Hire?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, the motion carries. Item three is citizens' request to address the board. Under item three, you're given two opportunities to address the board. Under item 3.1, you can request to address the board on any item on tonight's agenda. And under item nine, you can request to address the board on any topic. When asking questions or making comments, please state your name and direct your comments to Mrs. Kelly Horst, President, Clarkston Board of Education. I asked Mrs. McLean to please share our agenda tonight. As you can see, we only have three topics on our agenda tonight. Attentative calendar amendment, approval of our temporary distance learning staffing proposal, and approval of personnel changes. We are going to go back to our traditional procedure for addressing the board. And so I would ask any citizens in the audience tonight, if you would like to address the board on any topics that are on tonight's agenda, now is the time to please make that request. These are the three items that are on tonight's agenda. So, members of the audience, I think by now we understand our procedure. You click on the participants button and then the raise hand button. And so for the items that are on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity to please get in the queue for those items. If you do not state your intention right now, you will have to wait until item nine at the end of our meeting. So I will give you just a moment if you wish to address the board on these three topics, one of these three topics. Attentative calendar amendment. Hang on, I clicked my button. The temporary distance learning staffing proposal or personnel changes now is the time to indicate your interest in addressing the board. And if you are here by phone, star nine. So I'll give you just a moment to indicate your interest there. Otherwise, all citizen comments will be addressed under item nine. All right, Mrs. McLean, I'm not seeing anyone at this time that's indicating their interest in addressing the board on our agenda. Am I getting that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so thank you. If you're in the audience then and you would like to address the board, we will get to you then when we get to item nine. We will move on to item four, our superintendent update, Dr. Ryan.
Thank you, President Horst. I have some very good community updates which we'll share tonight and also in writing this week with our broader community. Make sure that everybody gets the message. And this past weekend, I want everybody to know that our legislators and governor were meeting to discuss reopening recommendations. For the most part, my takeaway messages are of encouragement, but not of legislative action. The areas that I saw that our legislature and governor had found agreement on was in looking at how they were going to justify or account for pupil accounting this year. On that 75% weighted to last year to 25% this year. I saw a lot of work which encouraged us to work with our individual districts, our communities, and our staffs on our reopening plans and all the elements that go along with it. And that we want to continue to monitor, update our board and our community at a frequent basis, on a monthly basis, to have our plans reapproved. I saw accountability added in in terms of following testing and other type of metrics to monitor student progress across this year. And I saw the legislature move to encourage and support schools to come up with academic goals as it relates to the current COVID crisis and how it transpires across this year. Looking at our own down home representatives, I want to thank Representative Schroder and Senator Rosemary Baer for their willingness to engage me for many hours over the last week and taking views as this bill materialized kind of just between the legislature and the governor. It really wasn't brought to education entities for way in and support. I would have liked a little stronger messaging in terms of supports and more than than just encouraging, but it is what it is. And I think it comes down back to the local entities, the local school districts, to pull up their bootstraps, evaluate the situations they're in with their administration, staff, and community. Make decisions to move forward. And I really feel like more and more that we're in a very good spot in Clarkston with respect to that. Because it should be known, and I'll say it every opportunity that I have, is that I want to have in-person learning as soon as possible. And so does our Board of Education, our administrators, I believe our teachers as well. But they want it done the right way. And I believe that we have a plan to get us there, not in terms of months or semesters, like some school districts are evaluating out there. I look at it in terms of weeks and parts of months instead. And I sincerely believe that we can get there as a school district and a community. And what informs that thinking? Is it just hope? Absolutely not. I think from the support of our meeting last week and my concerns about the cooperative efforts with our Oakland County Health Department, knowing that they have to be an active partner as prescribed by law and executive order through our governor, whether it was from my continued persistence in getting a response or from our community who reached out and contacted Oakland County government on my behalf to get support. I'm happy and excited to report that this past week, members of the Oakland County Health Department, their executive leadership, met with myself and a group of superintendents to talk about the reentry process, talk about student and staff safety, and talk about what we need to do to not only open schools, but to keep them open once they are open. And those are important factors. When before our superintendent groups across the county were relying on the benefit of local healthcare providers and literature that they could bring to bear to help inform their decisions. Now, I get to publicly thank, first of all, Rudy Hobbs, who's the deputy county executive who met with us. Also, Kaylee Jordan Blaney, who's a county epidemiologist who met with us as superintendents. And Kathleen Foresley, who I want to thank, who is the Director of Health and Human Services in Oakland County. Far from just meeting with a hodgepodge group, we met with the leadership of Oakland County to really vet and get their thinking on steps moving forward. We were able to come and share both our frustrations and our hopes of working with Oakland County Health Department and Oakland County as a whole, moving forward within this pandemic. We talked about metrics, both in terms of what we see forward over the upcoming weeks to look at stability, both in terms of infection rates, length of time to receive positive or negative tests. We looked at hospital stays and also mortality. And we looked at it as a way from our experts at our health department to help inform our school district. Because they understand that their cooperation with us, their work in contact tracing, will very much influence our ability to not only safely open, but as I said, to keep open. And to do that, the metric that I'm looking at right now preliminarily is that the school districts that we're going to be studying this around that do open, maintaining that 80% attendance rate day in, day out, for that first number of weeks of school. Because if we can come back to school, but because of contact tracing and quarantining our students and staff, if we can't keep up a viable program that's consistently providing school in a format that we feel continues to push forward learning, it is of little value at the end of the day. So, I believe now, with the support of our colleagues at the Oakland Health Department and their commitment to meet with me weekly in their assessment and continued follow-up of this information, that over this next series of weeks, the schools open, that we're going to be able to put together a package and a plan that relates to not only science, but to the science of keeping schools open and keeping education move forward. So, to our community and to our board, I'm very hopeful that we're going to be able to turn a corner in Clarkston and move into that in-person learning in a safe and constructive way. And in the interim, I plan to continue to provide those updates at every opportunity that I have, both in terms of what direction we're heading in with respect to the virus in Oakland County, and also the protocols to make sure that we're safely bringing staff and students in buildings and keeping our doors open once we bring them back. So, just to kind of finalize that thought, I want our community to know that we are on our toes and not on our heels. And that is our clear intent to get people and our students and staff back in school. And to that end, we also moved this week, working with our special services and our special ed department, to make sure that we're going to have our students have flexibility who are receiving special ed services to get them back into school in a safe way, based on their IEPs, in addition to their distance learning, to make sure they're supported at an even higher level. And we want to continue in the upcoming weeks to push forward that phased reentry as much as we can for other things. I think it's important that if it can be done safely, that we are bringing activities and other type of things where students can engage in, where it's not the same level of bringing a 2,000 individual high school back into session, but in smaller groupings, whether it be through small groups of athletics, clubs, other student organizations, music, to where we can do it in a way that's safe and gives us stepping stones to our eventual plan of getting everybody back. So, again, I'm hopeful. I feel like that we need to be aggressive, but we also need to have our heads on and our eyes focused on the horizon when it comes to doing it in a safe, collaborative, supportive way. And I know for my two daughters at home, who are tuning in tonight with the idea of hoping that dad continues to make it so they can come back to school, I say to Evan and Ellie out there, thanks for tuning in for dad tonight, but also that for your safety and for the well-being of getting you back into school as quickly as possible, dad's got a plan. He's going to work it. He's got cooperative effort from a greater county base. And I feel very, very positive moving in the next section of weeks. So, I want to give that as kind of the overall update. And also, we'll be providing other important information during this meeting for our administrative team on the different type of things that we've already employed and that we need to look at moving forward to make sure that we're ready for school anyway it happens this year. So, thank you, President Horst.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Move on to item five, presentation items. 5.1 is attentive calendar amendment. Dr. Ryan and Mr. Lucido.
So, opening up, looking at management in a crisis, we look at not only making sure that we're prepared for school, but making any adjustments as needed and making sure that our board and community understands our point in time. Back at the beginning of summer, when we were exploring multiple different formats for running in school, of which we are, as I said, pushing towards in-person. But knowing the condition in the world in Michigan, we might be forced back into a virtual learning or a distance learning format multiple times through this year. Because we are not in complete control of the path of the virus in our state or in our county. But to do that, one of the big items that we pushed forward was, was to make sure that all students in Clarkston had the one-to-one technology asset. To that end, as soon as we created our plans at the beginning of summer, we made a commitment with our Board of Education's support to order all that technology so it was available on the first day of school. Knowing that how critical it is to have a ubiquitous and working piece of technology for every student that teachers can then teach in a very linear way that reaches all of them through common technology. Our original delivery date in a very direct way was August 6th. Since August 6th, we've been continuing to push to get a portion of that technology which still has not been delivered to us as it approached the mid-August point. It's this time that I'm bringing to the attention of the board, our administrative team, and I've already to our union support that it's my intention to look at, right now, we have a delivery date of August 31st to receive that technology, which is not good enough for me. So, the district is currently working on hopefully getting that technology by the 31st now. And it's been delayed because of COVID reasons, understanding the nation is under turmoil right now in terms of producing things that it normally wouldn't have problems to establish. But Mr. Lucio is going to kind of walk us through our thinking of proposing, and again, not having approved tonight, but proposing the amendment of our current state start date from the 31st of August to one week further after Labor Day so that we can have full technology assets to begin our school year with. There's some also other benefits to it, and we can think we can do it in a way, or we will do it in a way, that would not affect the overall length of our school year as it sits. So, Mr. Lucido is going to kind of walk us through this. But as we manage the day-to-day, we're going to keep everybody informed of what our challenges are, what we're excited about, and how we're going to deal with it moving forward. So, Mr. Lucido.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. So, we've tentatively agreed with our teachers' union to extend the report date back to 9/8 instead of 8/31 to begin our distance learning. We wanted to present this information to get feedback from the board and the community. And we're hopeful to have it on the board agenda for approval on Monday, August 24th. So, in order for us to do this and not have to add days to the school year, we will be taking four of our professional development days and converting those to instructional days later in the year. And that will allow us to push the start date, start date back. You know, the rationale for doing this is, as Mr. Ryan stated, this should give us the opportunity to have all those devices in so we can do a full distribution. We do have devices. It would just, we would be short. So, we would be working on to find out which families had had devices at home that wouldn't need one now, that maybe received one in the spring. But it would be a much cleaner process if we were able to complete our one-to-one by that time. The other benefit for us to be doing this is that would give us four more days of face-to-face instructional time for the school year. And then, Mrs. McLean, can you advance the slide, please? Yeah, thank you. And then the last, the last part is that there would be no impact to the end of the school year. We would be able to end the school year as we are planning to now.
Trustees, are there any questions or comments on this for Mr. Lucido or Dr. Ryan regarding the calendar? I mean, I remember this, some of these elements actually came up during our public comment last year. There were some questions about what would happen with this, in these formats with professional development days. And so, actually, this is quite an interesting take on that. And I would think our community would be happy to see more days devoted to face-to-face instruction throughout the year rather than, you know, PD days. So, that's one appeal to me certainly. So, I would certainly welcome, since we're sharing this screen, I can't see all of you. So, if you just want to be orderly and speak up, I would appreciate it.
President Hire and Board Ben, I have to say that I really like this. I really like the front-loading of the virtual and remote learning opportunities that our teachers can share with one another. I think it's only going to benefit our students that much more. I think the opportunity for our teachers to learn from people who have possibly been experiencing how can I do's all summer long, anticipating where we might be anyways. So, I really, really think that this is a great use of the time prior to the holiday and putting our teachers in a face-to-face orientation regarding this virtual and remote is really a great idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. McGinnis. Okay, you're all back in front of me now. Who else has a question or a comment for our administration regarding this proposal?
President Horst, I have an additional thing I'd like the board to consider. Knowing that our process is, we're sharing this with you this evening based on, as a contingency. You know, we're working, again, one day at a time to make sure that we're ready to go. And regardless, we'll be ready to go. It's if we want to be to the level that I expect in terms of excellence and that both, both in terms of what our teaching is. That's not at odds right now. What at odds is simply a delivery piece of it in the middle of a pandemic. And I think that it's better instead of just blindly moving forward, but to have really kind of a plan, not only being able to front-load and make lemonade out of our situation, but to make sure that we're starting on the right foot with that distance approach. The concern I have this evening is the date. And knowing that the union, who has been favorable in terms of their responses, our CEA, which we negotiate calendar, and sitting down with them, they completely understand the situation as a whole in terms of having it in hand. They are very supportive of this. And knowing that there has to be, again, a process to where they approve this as part of their membership, and then the board approves it a week from tonight, I would like any indication we can give our community, the direction that we're heading from the board, if there's general support, just from the standpoint that I want our families to have as much time to react and prepare and provide feedback, you know, I suppose over the week as well. I do not want this to be done in a way that feels, in any way that, you know, is not explainable or that has any other type of mystery. There really is no mystery to this recommendation and presentation tonight.
Mr. Need?
President Horst, yes, I support the proposal. I agree with all the comments that Mrs. McGinnis had. I do think this is a superior proposal to allow us to ramp up properly.
I think one other issue there for consideration is, you know, the consistency of devices was discussed last week a lot. And knowing that we have that element of protection with GoGuardian and that security that we are installing on our devices, I would certainly feel more comfortable knowing that all of our students had that, had a protected device in their hands from day one and that we weren't sort of, I don't know if cobbling together is the right phrase, but we weren't counting on certain students to use their own devices for an amount of time and that we couldn't necessarily guarantee that we had those protective measures in some hands and not others. So, I think I'm a little more comfortable with this idea, knowing that we were going to buy ourselves that week to make sure that we had those measures of security that are so important to us and monitoring installed on all of our devices. And those were going to go in everybody's hands at the same time. Dominating the conversation. Other comments, other, and I think, so what Dr. Ryan is looking for is sort of some general, the general direction from the board at this time. And then we can have the week for feedback from our community. So, general support in favor of, can I get some feedback from that from the board? Mrs. Egan?
Yes, I support this approach. I like the softer start for our staff so they can get in the buildings, get used to screening. All the things they have to do now under these, under this new normal, get their classrooms set up and test out at least their technology and really plan for the opening and getting themselves student-ready. So, I'm glad we can give them a little more extra time upfront.
Mrs. Crane?
Mrs. Kess? I also fully support it for the same reasons everyone has said. I think that the least amount of unease and chaos we can give our students and teachers the better. So, if that means we can give them an extra week, hopefully to get the same devices, that they're all starting on the same devices, and to give our teachers that extra time to learn how to use Google Classroom in a cohesive manner, I think I'm fully supportive.
Mrs. Catalina?
Yes, I also am fully supportive of this. It is, it would, it's very important for the teachers, the staff, to be able to come together and really get to know what this new school year is going to be like and how we're going to start off with professional development and, you know, being able to use this new Guardian technology as well as all of the new things that I'm hoping Google Classroom is going to now give its teachers as we still are in this pandemic. You know, I think to allow these, the teachers to come together and, you know, meet and plan and kind of get a good sense of what the first few weeks are going to look like and not really have to do it in three days. But, you know, to give them some extra time, you know, up until the eighth. So, I'm in support of this as well.
I would also add, President Horst, the administration will not be forthcoming with any other recommendations to change this. Again, this is a one-and-done. We will make whatever we need to make necessary for the first day. So, this is what, you know, this is it in terms of any adjustments that we would be offering. Short of, you know, I guess there could be another natural disaster occur in our community that I'm not prepared on, I don't even want to court. But again, based on information right now and everything we have, that there will be no other recommendations to change.
Okay, so it sounds like the board is supportive of this proposal and certainly will take the week and hear from our community. They certainly haven't been shy about sharing their opinions with us, right, Dr. Ryan? So, we'll certainly bring that feedback to bear next week and bring this back for approval as an action item. Okay? I think you have direction, the direction you need. We'll move on to action items. 6.1 is approval of temporary distance learning staffing proposal. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the temporary distance learning staffing proposal as presented.
Support. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Ryan and Mr. Lucido.
Okay, looking at a week ago, when we collectively made to decide how we were going to open school, Mr. Lucido and I immediately went to work at pivoting our school district to be fully ready, not only for operationalizing the distance learning piece, but simultaneously being ready and also create the right situation so that we can move back into the face-to-face as well on short notice. So, that was the direction I had Mr. Lucido go. We want to have the school district staffing that matches the needs of our program and for kids. We're doing that in short order. We're going to provide, again, that initial that's going to match that distance learning piece and then anticipate that pivot point. So, Mr. Lucido is going to be able to discuss what we're going to take immediate actions and how we're going to be ready to switch as we move forward into the start of school.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. The first part of our presentation is going to be a financial update. Like, Mrs. Rogers, to walk us through the first couple of slides.
Sorry, just a moment. We've got to make her a panelist.
Okay.
Are we all set? Okay. Fine, this is just two slides. The first slide is about 2018 and 20, where we're looking for 2019, 20 as we move into the audit. It's coming in September. We started with our beginning fund balance of 9.6%. And you passed in June, the 2019, 20 final amended surplus. That was giving us about 1.356 million surplus. And, but the final savings, as we're moving forward and we're getting everything booked, the expenses and the revenue booked, final savings are estimating to be greater than that. So, I'm expecting it to be quite a bit larger savings for that. And the auditors will be here the second week of September, so we should have even more solid information by then. And then, the $175 peroration did hit our August date aid. It was just under 1.5 million. It was like 1.498 million dollars that we got cut for this year. But, as I mentioned earlier, that the final savings was estimated to be greater. It looks like the savings might be about that much greater. So, I believe even with the 1.5 million peroration, we should still end up with some type of surplus that should be over a million moving to 2020, 21. So, right now, our final amended surplus is just over 11%. As for the 2019, 20, that's where we're at right now. Now, 2020, 21, as we know, the state budget still is unknown. There has been no inclination of what type of operation, if any, we will be receiving. The third revenue consensus is August 24th, so next Monday. So, we should know more next week once they go through a third revenue consensus, which has never happened in my 20-year career. So, the federal funding is unknown. So the federal funding is unknown, but we, there's lots of branches of federal funding. There's CARES, there's ESTER, there's FEMA. Most of that is unknown. We do know some of it. We did receive the 350 per pupil, which is just over 2.9 million relief funding in our August date aid too, and that is to be booked in 2020, 21. But we don't know the restrictions, the guidance, how to count for it yet. They say that's coming out this week, so hopefully they don't put too many federal restrictions on it. The board approved budget reduction that the board approved in June. Just to remind you, it was 3.156 that was implemented in the 2020, 21 budget. The board approved a $400 peroration, so that's what we're going with right now until we hear from the state and they get their budget passed. That put us at that time in 2020, 21, board-approved deficit of 861, 245. So that's what we're going with right now until we know more from the state and what we can do with this federal funding that we're receiving. So to have any questions? Because I went through that kind of quickly.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Rogers, trustees? All right, thank you, Mr. Lucido. Please continue.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Rogers.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Was there a question?
No, I just said you're welcome.
Thank you. Proceed, Mr. Lucido.
Yep, Clarkston Virtual Enrollment Analysis. So our enrollment for the Clarkston Virtual, with a deadline for families to make that decision to move from, from the Clarkston Virtual back to distance learning was today at noon. We ended up with 1,350 students that will be enrolling in the program. We're anticipating roughly, or a student-teacher ratio of 1 to 30. That's going to require 45 teachers. Most of these students did come from our brick-and-mortar buildings in Clarkston. So these students, these 1,350 came from 12 different schools. We are working diligently and have been since we got the final, since the deadline passed today at noon to take the data. And what we're going to be doing is pulling these individual students out of their classrooms to the virtual program and then reevaluating our staffing. We are anticipating being able to reduce by 25 FTEs from our brick-and-mortar buildings to move over to our virtual program. So that would, that would leave us with the need for 20 teachers. We do have some teachers that are currently on a layoff status that we would be able to recall and we might, we most likely with these numbers are going to have to hire. But it is, it is a little early to tell by, we should know by mid to late next, late this week. So to hire 20 teachers is roughly 1.4 million dollars. The virtual program, the provider that we're paying is $500 per student. That's 675,000. There's 54 students that are enrolled from outside of Clarkston because this is a school-of-choice program. Right now, this revenue is 416,394. That's with our projected per pupil allowance and with the current understanding of schools of choice. The bill that was brought forward this weekend would take school-of-choice funding down from 100% down to 25%. So it's basically, what it's stating is that school districts will get you 75% of their enrollment from last year and 25 from this, from this, the new school year. So this would take this funding for us, this 416, down to roughly around 100 is what, what the impact of that would be. So the total cost to us to run the Clarkston Virtual program with the rough numbers we have as of today is 1.6 million there.
One thing I'd add, Mr. Lucido, is that 20 FTEs, that 1.4 million is the assumption that all of our individuals would stay in that virtual program for the entire school year, correct? So hopefully with us already being back in school for a period of time, come change of semester, that we'd have students migrate back in to our brick-and-mortar in-person, in-person learning, both because of the structure and I think hopefully better days ahead of people wanting to come back in an in-person learning format. We would immediately adjust the staffing around there to reflect the new reality. So that has to be in consideration, not knowing what January might look like as well, correct, Mr. Lucido?
That's correct. We do anticipate, if we're back in face-to-face and things have improved with the virus, you know, we do anticipate a big migration back to our brick-and-mortar buildings. So this is a hard number to quantify, but you know, with every school district around us creating a virtual program, you know, we anticipate, we have 1,350 families in Clarkston that wanted a virtual offering. Had we not offered this, we would assume that we would have lost, you know, roughly 500 students, I think, is a conservative estimate. And just so the community and the board knows the impact of what something like that would have cost. It's, it would be, 500 students would cost the school district, you know, almost $4 million. So, you know, it might, you know, long-term, we think this program is going to be very viable, but it also kept Clarkson's students in Clarkston. So what we are proposing to do with a lot of our support staff is right now, the government has, President Trump has an executive order for $400 additional per week. 300 is coming from the federal level and 100 is supposed to come from the state level. And this will extend, this started on August 1st and will go through December 31st. I do think that this is, we can count on this money. However, there is the possibility that a new law could be passed, so this could be richer or this could complicate this extra funding. But right now, this is the information we have. And this would make the weekly benefits in Michigan $762 per week. Now, this is significantly more than most of our support man, support staff make in a week. Estimated savings from reducing support staff not essential to district operations is roughly $200,000 per week. So it would take us roughly about 10 weeks to fully recover from the cost of implementing the virtual program and all the extra Corona expenses that we've had.
And there's no attachment except for comparative analysis on that. Our drive is still to get into school as soon as possible.
Right. Now, the 200,000 would be if we laid off all support staff and that is not, that is not feasible. We're currently evaluating this and looking at, you know, what staff do we need in the distance learning setting? We're still going to need some bus drivers. We're still going to need pairs. We're still going to need food service staff. So we are, we are working, working through that process now. Ms. McLean, could you advance a slide? So, you know, some of the support staffs that we're looking at is the paraprofessional, transfer station, custodial unions, building aids, instructional aids, food service staff and other support staff that are not essential to district operations in the distance learning environment. We are value, we are working on this now, the different administrators that are responsible for this. We are working with these unions and we're going to be evaluating which, which support staff are needed for us to have a successful operation in distance learning. And this could change over time depending on how long we're out of school. If we are fortunate enough to be able to come back relatively quickly, you know, we might need most of our custodians. But if it turns into a long-term thing, and that's why we're having the discussions and being upfront with the staff now. And then we are, with any proposal we do to furlough staff, we were, we are proposing that we would continue their healthcare, seniority, any vacation accruals, anything like that. This would strictly be wages that the district would save and that 200,000 would be the cap that we would, we would save. But I do not think we would be able to hit that number with us still needing some of the support staff. So with that being said, what we're asking the Board of Education for is kind of the autonomy to study this, study these functions and furlough staff as, as we see is needed to keep the district operation going. What questions do you have?
Trustees? Thank you, Ms. McLean. It's easier when I can see who wants to, who wants to raise their hand and ask questions. What questions or comments do you have for Mr. Lucido here? I would say also, a lot of these questions were raised last week. I feel like during, during the public comment, during a lot of the questions that came up in terms of, you know, what would happen, you know, to staff if buildings were closed. And so I'm just continually amazed at the number of moving parts that happen here. And Mr. Lucido, I know you were in constant contact with our employee groups and I think, you know, on behalf of the board, we're very grateful for all of them for working with us. I think we are really fortunate in Clarkston for how collaborative they are working with the district, not only during these times, really during all times. And I think we see the benefit of that during times like this, during times of crisis, that we, that we pay attention to those relationships on an ongoing basis. So thank you very much for the attention that you give to all of that. It is a complicated, complicated element of running an organization like this. So I think we appreciate the attention that you give to that and to all of our employees out there that are affected by this. We value you and, you know, you're, you're looking at your lives on this screen like this and we're aware of that. And, and so the ties that we want to maintain with you are real. And, and so I'm supportive of the ways that you have put up there to maintain those ties because when we come back face-to-face, we want you back in those buildings and we're going to need you back in those buildings. So I'll leave it at that and I'll certainly let my other trustees chime in with questions or comments.
Mrs. Horst?
Mr. Hire?
Thank you. First, I think we need to double down on what you just said and Mr. Lucido also said. I mean, our staff, you know, as we go to this distance learning model, our frontline workers, you know, delivering these services, as we come back in person, we need all of our staff ready to go at that point and that's going to be vital. I mean, this is going to be a transition of immense proportions across our entire community. And, you know, that's a big deal. And I guess I'll appreciate in advance our staff working with us on the transition of furloughing as Mr. Lucido laid out, coming back. So, so thank you there. As far as a procedural note goes, the, this action item is really to approve this plan and concept. And then the next one is really creating positions. And I really love the range of positions we're creating in the next action item. I wonder if we could approve the concept of this plan and approve the positions and filling the positions at the same time as we go forward? Because just as, obviously, we're in unprecedented times, but just as a matter of past practice and procedure, we typically create a position and then fill it. And the position we create typically then would flow into the budget. And while I don't have any, any trust issues with the administration, I think it would be more prudent for us to approve just the positions we know we need. And I assume we're going to know we need it when we fill them. And I'd much rather give Mr. Lucido the assurance that we would approve the position and fill it at the same time going forward. And then as a board and being good stewards of our resources, we'll know exactly what positions we're, we're adding at that point rather than somewhere of a range between 6 and 20. So I guess just to operationalize that, I would vote that we, I would, I would suggest that we vote and approve the current recommendation and table the next one and approve those in our future meetings as the positions are filled.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd be completely fine with it, Mr. Hire. I think we want this to be, obviously, as transparent and as humane. And knowing, I think you said it very well that, you know, to me, I look at this as just a, you know, an interzone between having everybody back. So we get to keep the engine running to some extent to be able to turn that corner. People, I don't know, have always get the magnitude of Clarkston Schools being over 1,100 employees, you know, all working concert for the education of our kids. So looking at needing and being able to support that, we want the board to feel comfortable as we fill, pivot and then pivot back again, so.
I absolutely agree with Mr. Ryan. Thank you, Mr. Hire. I can, I can certainly fill those positions if you're granting me that autonomy and bring the position request with the individual to the next board meeting.
I think that would be great. And I will say, I mean, I don't have a way to sort of make this happen, but I think I've known Dr. Ryan and you and your practices in terms of how we staff and we're right there with, with school starting. You know, obviously, we don't want to fill positions if we don't have to fill them. And I think, you know, with such a question mark on enrollment for this year, you know, we want to be as conservative as, as we possibly can, I think, going forward. And, and that's something that, I mean, we could have some wild swings in enrollment. I mean, there's no Plant Moran study or Stanford numbers that exactly predict what's going to happen here in three weeks for us. And so I think, you know, sort of waiting to see the whites of their eyes, as Dave Reschke used to say. You know, I don't know what the equivalent of that is in a distance learning format, but, you know, I mean, we're, there's no action needed if, if parents are going to opt into distance learning. And there's not particularly an option for them to disentroll if they're doing something else either, you know, right at that point. And so that, that makes me a little nervous in terms of the wild variations going forward and what effect it has. So I think as much as we can be prepared, you know, but, but still cover all our bases there, I hope that's the way we're, we're going to approach the start of the school year.
Are there other comments or questions from trustees? All right, so our current motion on the table is for the approval of our temporary distance learning staffing proposal and then we'll deal with 6.2 in just a minute. This approves the proposal that Mr. Lucido just described. Are we ready to vote? All right, Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hire?
Yes.
Mr. Nead?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, the motion carries. Great, item 6.2 is approval of personnel changes. And so given what Mr. Hare just described, should I just ask for a motion? And then we can discuss the table? So just ask procedurally?
There's no, no discussion on the table. So if I move to table, we're voting on it. So if you wanted to say anything before then, now would be the time, otherwise I'll make the motion.
No, please go ahead.
I move that we table the action item 6.2, approval of personnel changes.
Support. All right, Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Hire?
Yes.
Mr. Nead?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, the motion is tabled. Okay, item seven, report items, there are none. Item eight is discussion items, there are none tonight. Item nine is citizen comments. Citizens are now welcome to address the board on any topic at this point on the agenda. So citizens in the audience, now is the time. If you would like to go down to participants, if you would like to address the board, go down to participants and then click on the raise hand feature if you wish to address the board. And just a reminder that you will have two minutes that we hear your comments. This is not the forum where we can answer questions, but we are happy to hear from you this evening and I will give you just a few moments to indicate your interest in addressing the board this evening. If you are on the phone with us tonight, star nine is the appropriate way to indicate your interest in addressing the board. I'm looking down the list, giving you just a few minutes. I'm not seeing anyone indicate their interest in addressing the board this evening. Mrs. McLean, am I missing something?
No, I don't see anyone.
Not, okay. Then we'll move on to item 10, information items. Our next Board of Education meeting is Monday, August 24th. That one is also at 5:30 via That one is also at 5:30 via Zoom. We are working on getting back to in-person meetings. We had to order a piece of technology for our Independence Television producer to use in order to be able to, I don't understand the technology here, I'm sure Mr. Hare does, to translate from this format to a broadcast format. That should be here at some point next week and then we can get back into the boardroom.
Clarify, Mrs. Horst, that would be us being able to
Us in person.
Each other and the audience will still be able to participate electronically.
Right.
Because of the in-person gathering limit.
The 10-person rule, right. So we will be back in person in the boardroom come September. I believe that is the 14th. Yes, so our, our audience will still have to participate remotely by Zoom, but we will be back in person in the boardroom, September 14th. Depending, this technology going well, but I trust ITV to make that happen. Item 11. I didn't even get the words out, Mr. Hare. I, we move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Support.
Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.